Well, the baby's sick too. Do you think I -- oh, I didn't know Ryan was sick. I'm giving you a run.
Down, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, go, go.
She wants to check the microphone.
It's a little spotty. Yeah, people should just stay home when they're sick.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, November 9th, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You do that very well. Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Colton.
Here, thank you, yes, and we have an agenda. We have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Um, I probably should have done this first, but I noticed our DDA Dracula is here, so I'd like to add him as a presentation, so maybe Presentation B.
And Mayor, if we could have Item 6F pulled from the agenda as well.
6F, totally pulled, not removed, a regular, but pulled.
Pulled, there's additional work that needs to be done with respect to that item.
All right.
Through the chair, can I ask a point of clarification? You mean F, the boiler, or the attachment F, which is the backer purchase?
It is the boiler.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Greg, do you make that motion pending changes?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
All right, moved by Pollocka, supported by Martin. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Colton.
Yes, thank you, the agenda is adopted. Actually, Barry, maybe I'll make you first, just in case you don't want to sit through the Master Land Use Plan update. You can if you want, but if you'd like to come on up and tell us all of the wonderful things happening at the DDA, awesome.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just had a couple of quick announcements that I wanted to get out there, and that is that on Saturday, November 21st, is the Third Annual Holiday Hoof. It's 5K that starts and finishes in Downtown Ferndale on Troy Street next to One-Eyed Betty's. It's $45 to register, which also includes entrance into Festive Ale, which is happening at One-Eyed Betty's in the parking lot next door, and that includes a drink token and a tee-shirt. Sign-in packets begin, or you can sign in starting at 8:30 a.m. that day. The race kicks off at 10:30. There will be an award ceremony afterwards at 11:30 for things like the fastest time or most spirited team, so, you know, dress up, kind of get into the holiday spirit. And then also, you can register online for that at downtownferndale.com. And another event that I wanted to promote while I'm here tonight was on Saturday, November 28th, it is Shop Small Business Saturday. It's a campaign led by American Express to encourage small businesses to come together and promote their community and get people out and shopping at local businesses. The information about this program has been distributed to our business owners downtown. Participation is voluntary but encouraged, so if you're a small business downtown, if you haven't gotten that information, you should be getting it soon. There's no cost to participate, and for participating businesses, we will be handing out different items that they can use, like bags, and I had some that I was going to bring with me, but I forgot to put them in my car, so that's my bad. But there's bags that say Shop Small Business, everything in banners and things like that that you would get, and you can hand those out to your customers, too. And then the businesses are also encouraged to do things like maybe offer discounts or a hot cider or something like that, just to draw people in a little bit. And also, that same day, on November 28th, at 6:00 p.m., we will be doing the tree lighting in the middle of Woodward Avenue, the Woodward Nine Mile intersection there, which will also be featuring Metallica's. I know some of you are familiar with the local talent, so they're going to be there for the Christmas lighting as well. Also wanted to say thanks to the Magic Bag for taking advantage of the DDA's Build Program, which has resulted in the installation of the awesome new sign, which most of you have probably seen lit up down there. If you haven't, check it out on your way going up Woodward. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody so far, on council, the DDA Board, city staff, everyone that's been so kind in welcoming me and taking the time to sit down with me and talk. I know I'm still getting out there and trying to meet more people, but everyone's been so gracious, and I really appreciate that.
Thanks, Barry, welcome to town.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is the Master Plan Update, and Kara and Justin, are you guys going to do that? And Justin, while you're coming up, I heard that congratulations are in order, you're now a full-time city employee.
Officially, yes.
Excellent, congratulations, sir.
It's great to be a board.
Happy to have you officially onboard.
Thanks, yeah, it's great to be aboard, so. One of the early projects that I've been working on with Derek and Kara and a lot of folks is the Master Plan Update, so. As you're probably aware, for 2016, the state of Michigan requires every five years, communities update their master plan, so that is kind of where we're at. So Kara and I are going to give you an update of what's been going on and what's to come, so. Just to take a few steps back and let you know where we came from, throughout the first half of 2015, there was a request to look for consultants to help with the master plan process, and that kind of took through the first half of the year, and Hamilton Anderson Associates and Gibbs Planning Group were selected. We're happy to have them helping us out with that. We signed the contract in July with Hamilton Anderson and Gibbs, and then in between that time, we've been gathering folks to be part of our Master Land Use Advisory Committee, and we've been meeting every four to five weeks or so. We launched Ferndale Exchange, a community engagement tool, which we'll discuss a little bit further in September, and been posting a few things since then to get people interested in that, and Kara's going to talk more about that. And then Gibbs Planning, their focus was on a, two market analysis studies, which covered everything from residential to office, and so they just delivered those results, and that's something we're going to share with you guys soon as well. So as part of the process with Hamilton Anderson and Gibbs, there's four methods of community engagement that we're trying to be part of the process, so trying to think about more than just town hall meetings, and those will also be part of things as well. But, like I said, the Master Land Use Plan Advisory Committee, some public workshops, some focus groups that will be held by Gibbs Planning specifically around Hilton area and then as well as Livernoy, and then community engagement online, which will be Ferndale Exchange. So like I said, every, you know, four to six weeks, we've been meeting to talk about with the committee. It includes a whole host of people from, Melanie from City Council and Planning Commission, and then the schools, the DDA, Barry joined us for one recently, and then the Chamber, and trying to get a cross-section of a lot of stakeholders across the city, talking about goals and visions and early research that, getting feedback on some of that.
May I, through the chair, would you prefer questions during the presentation or at the end?
Whatever, throughout's fine.
Could you go back a slide?
Sure.
I noticed there aren't any environmental group, oh yeah, and sustainability, never mind, I missed it.
Yes.
My bad.
No problem. And there's a few other people that weren't included on this slide, but, but yeah, sustainability, they've been a big part of it as well.
I apologize.
No problem. And so, to come, we're going to be doing some public workshops focused on a lot of the key findings that we've found so far. We're planning some of those potentially for mid, early to mid-December, and Hamilton Anderson will be handling a lot of that. I just included an image of one of the research aspects that they've been providing so far. So they've been in the data gathering phase, and a lot of the things that you see at the front of a master plan, the background research, is what they've been compiling and sharing so far. And that's, you know, the more traditional way to meet publicly, engage residents that might not be giving feedback online. And then also, like I said, Gibbs Planning will be holding those focus groups, focusing on retail and office and residential, and what that potential capacity could be in the future. And then we're going to select specific members from each of those districts to give feedback, and probably some other folks as well. And I'll kind of let Kara talk about the online engagement, but just as a point of comparison, the 2008 Master Plan, so that community engagement included some forum meetings with about 50 participants, one online survey that had about 100 participants, and then five focus groups, which the attendance ranged from three to 20 participants throughout. So we think that Ferndale Exchange will be something that can continue the master plan conversation throughout the year, so.
Kara, you want to take over?
Ms. Mayor, this is forwarding the slide?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, we're all on social media, I know you are all on social media, you know the, you know, huge number of conversations that are happening across all of our platforms. We've got conversations happening on our own pages, that's the best-case scenario, that they're coming in or being, they're tagging us directly, let's say on Instagram or Twitter. The worst-case scenario is that they're happening across forums, private groups, that they're conversing about us on Twitter and Instagram but not actually tagging us, and I think that's actually probably about 75% of what's going on out there. And we do the best we can to listen, but we are not able to catch all of it. So as a method of kind of taking all of these conversations happening across so many different social platforms, we decided to try to create kind of a master hub where we can focus the conversations specifically related to the Master Land Use Plan. Ferndale Exchange is really meant to kind of take all these conversations, bring them in, in a place where we're actually managing the conversation and we're able to kind of push out the content. I think more than being useful by staff and by the committee for our goals going forward, I think a site like Ferndale Exchange is actually really needed and wanted by our community. This screen cap is kind of an example. This is the first question that was posed on Ferndale Exchange that we pushed out onto our social media platforms. One of the first questions that we put up altogether, it's small, I know you can't really see it, but we talked about the development on Nine Mile. Conversation absolutely bloomed on Facebook, many of you probably saw it in the forum. We had 73 comments. There were opinions, most importantly, coming in from a really diverse variety of our audience, people who probably would not have attended a meeting if we had one. There was a really good mix of positive and negative and questions, just straight-up confusion about the project, you know, wanting to know how we were going to handle certain things. If we can kind of harness all that on Ferndale Exchange, that will be such valuable information for us to have. So, to kind of address how we're going to be posing this content across Ferndale Exchange, rather than picturing Facebook where we're just kind of making post after post or question after question, Hamilton Anderson has really worked with us to come up with a content calendar, worked really closely with Justin, that mimics a sort of in-person charrette-style conversation. So, content we put across is going to be a real mix of maps and photos and videos and questions, fill-in-the-blank and surveys, and a look at stats and survey results and bringing residents into that, so that it's kind of an ongoing, different look at a bunch of different issues, which will bring in different opinions from different residents. And, just a little bit about how we're going to get the kind of marketing about this out, I know there are a lot of sites and tools people are already conversing on. We are going with a really grassroots marketing campaign. The goal will be to spend little or no money. There's a couple of low-cost marketing plans that we have, that would be posters or little cards that we would leave around, but we're looking at sidewalk chalk out on the streets. We're looking at really neighbor-to-neighbor, you know, using the people who are on the committee, using people who are staff, people who, you know, are friends with all of you, and kind of urging them to be a part of the conversation on this site. So, I believe Hamilton Anderson will be coming in the coming weeks or months, if that's right, to give the kind of more detailed look at some of this stuff, but for now, does anybody have questions we can answer?
I have a couple, if I may. Well, really just one, and I know I sound like a broken record on this, I love the online stuff, I think it's fantastic. The world is online, but not all Ferndale residents are, and so, I know we don't get a good attendance at town halls, but if they're, and I like the idea of the workshop, I can't remember the word you used there, but if, for example, we could include reaching out to our senior group and doing something there, that's regularly 50 or 60 residents there, so we can get a little creative on the non-electronic media, I think that would be terrific. That would be my only feedback, otherwise this looks great.
Great, yeah, definitely, that's going to be a big, I mean, a component of finding, making sure that they can attend those meetings and getting out the information to those groups as well.
Thank you. Other questions to council, or comments?
Just one question, just one question. Justin, I appreciate the update. I am interested in seeing what type of activities you have planned for 2016, so for the next update, can you sort of give the overview of when this, what's going to happen over the next 12 months for next year?
Absolutely, and I think that, is it June or July, when we're tentatively wrapping up? Hopefully by June.
Oh.
That's what the contract says, so hopefully these things have a habit of dragging on a little bit longer. Just in brief, I mean, this is the standard first part, is the data gathering and then the public input, then that's when staff and the professionals go back and formulate the recommendations and start to put the bones of the plan together, and then we go back out to the public again with those recommendations and seek to see if what we're recommending meets their idea of what they wanted to see in the plan for implementation over the next 20 years, a Master Land Use Plan. We do it every five years, but it has a 20 to 25-year horizon associated with it. And to Councilmember Martin's point, certainly we're going to meet with the seniors and some of the specialty groups, but we have been encouraged so far. I think Justin mentioned earlier, the last Master Land Use Plan, we maybe had 100, 150 participants across all the forums, and to date, I think we've had over 7,000 views on the Ferndale Exchange, and we haven't even started to ask the questions yet. Now, whether we can turn those views into actual responses and not just people taking a look at it and moving it on will be the question, but the content calendar that we're going to put out is designed to ask the very same questions we would have asked those 120 residents, and try to exponentially increase the amount of data or responses we get from residents.
Sure, I'm not questioning the efficacy of the online effort, I just want to make sure there's not a constituency we leave behind.
We certainly hope not, so if there's anybody you talk to or anybody who feels like they're not being, we'll go out and meet with them personally if we need to, so.
Thank you.
Just to expound on Councilwoman Piana's comment is, I too would like to see a timeline, but I'd like to see it detailed, you know, what are the deadlines? I don't want just spring of 2016, or it would be great to know, you know, by end of March, that's going to be the last time anyone can put, you know, public input. We need to have that kind of detail, because sometimes people think, oh, well, I have some time, you know, I'll wait till April or May or what have you, and put it off, and they don't get to provide anything, so.
Understood.
I concur.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, and I guess I just have one final comment, and that is, and this is to our residents, you know, those of us on council hear a lot, and I know you hear, you know, this is what we like about Ferndale, or this is what we don't want Ferndale to become, you know, these sort of broad questions of who we are and what we're becoming. This is your opportunity in a systematic way and in a logical way for us to gather those sort of feelings and opinions that are just kind of anecdotally out there now. So, if it seems like we're taking a lot of time and going through a lot of process to get this, it's because we want to get this right, and we want to know what you're feeling, what you want to make sure we preserve, what you want to make sure we don't do. And so this is your opportunity, so I really do encourage you to take advantage of these opportunities that we've given you and that will be rolled out over the winter to give us your feedback, because we're very, we're very interested in your opinions.
And Mayor, you couldn't have said it better, and it made me think of something. The questions we're going to put out on the exchange will be tallied and incorporated into the recommendations that come out of the plan. They'll see them pushed out through other forums, through other social media, but if they really want their opinion to be heard and counted as part of the public input, you couldn't be more right. Please, instead of just responding to the post on Facebook or responding to the post on Instagram, please click over to the exchange, answer the surveys, they're not just random surveys, they're actually going to be used as public input in the plan and counted towards those final recommendations, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, you guys, okay, appreciate it. All right, moving on now to call the audience, and this is your opportunity, for those of you who are in the audience, to address council on any topic that you would like that's not on the agenda, because we would let you speak to that when we get there, but come on up, give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes, that's all yours, to speak to us on any issue that you would like. And a familiar face to start us off this evening.
Hi, my name is Sharon Schoss, 1119 Earl Boulevard, and I just want to say thank you so much for all of your support for the Ferndale Community Concert Band's first historic concert last Sunday, or a week ago yesterday. It was well-attended, but not as much as I wanted it, I wanted a full house and to bring in extra chairs. Our next concert is going to be our holiday concert on December 13th at the Ferndale High School at 3:00. And we're going to have a guest musician, actually a guest conductor, Damian Crutcher. He's a phenomenal musician, teacher, educator, and he's currently the conductor of the Ferndale, not the Ferndale, but the Farmington Concert Band, and he is, has agreed, because he's great friends with our current conductor, Ed Quitt, to be our guest conductor, and we're doing a special show with him on that evening. Also, for that evening, we're having a gospel group led by Carlos Whitlow, and he founded the group called Generation Praise, and they're award-winning, and their age group is from 17 to 25 years old. They won the Verizon's How Sweet the Sound competition. They're pretty phenomenal, I watched them on YouTube, so I'm really excited to have them also as our guests at the holiday concert, December 13th, 3:00 at the Ferndale High School. So, then, totally different topic. I wanted to know how, because we have a month before that, what our options are in getting our seniors from the housing developments and stuff to our concerts. I don't know if we have transportation that's available to them, but I would really like to see them particularly at the holiday concert, and I'll work on any level with anybody, I just need the direction on how to do that.
If I may, through the chair, that's actually already underway to figure out how we're going to do that for that and use that model for the movies in the park and stuff going forward, so.
Okay, super, that's terrific. And then I wanted to just give a shout-out to Carol Jackson and Cindy Wilcock, because these two women, I don't know how well everybody in the community knows these two women, but it seems like every time there's a crisis at the Chamber or the DDA, these women step up, and I think they should be recognized in the community as always coming to the plate when the batters are out and they pinch-hit. So, that's me, thank you.
Well said, thank you, Sharon. Cindy's mom is here. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Wilcock, 1615 West Marshall, and I am here tonight representing the Ferndale Memorial Association. Reminder to everybody that Wednesday is Veterans Day, and always on Veterans Day, we have a service at 11:00, it's 11:11:11, at the Veterans Memorial on Livernoy, across the street from the fire station. We invite you all, it's a short program, just a thank you to the servicemen, and we usually have a couple of speakers, they're short, especially if it's cold. Supposed to be a beautiful day, though. And then afterwards, the fire department hosts us for a little bit of coffee and cookies. So we please, everybody, if you can come, it's at 11:00, join us, we would love to see everybody there. And, Dave, maybe, are you off or not?
Oh.
You haven't.
I know you sent me that email.
Yeah. But you can let me know later, you can let me know later. But we'd love to see all the councilmen, and then especially for Raylan, they have her come as well. We are all invited, thank you.
Great reminder, thanks, Joanne. All right, anyone else would like to address the city council this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is John Anisur, and I live at 255 Livernoy, and I'm a longtime resident, lifetime resident of Ferndale, and basically, we have heartfelt concerns about the future of our area. Now, I'm sure all the distinguished council members realize that at the early part of last spring, 2015, there was a proposal to put in what basically would amount to a mini high-rise, basically touching our property. Now, I know that didn't go through, but we still don't know, you know, what the city, you know, feels towards that area. The surrounding residents really like the natural feel, it's a quiet area, you know, even though we're that close to Eight Mile, we just really kind of want to know what city council feels about that proposal that didn't go through, would there be another one coming up, or, you know, anything like that. We want to become more involved, you know, in our local government. I've been watching the council meetings lately, I find them a lot more interesting than I thought I would, and I noticed that they.
Thank you.
You had mentioned about residents becoming more involved locally, and I realize that local government to a resident is actually more important than the major government, because it affects us directly. And, basically, that is my question, what the city feels about that area now. We live like, what, 300 feet from Eight Mile, so there's a buffer zone there, you know, where, you know, it's just a nice area, and that's adjacent to our property.
We don't have an answer for you this evening, this is your opportunity to speak with us, but we hear your thoughts and opinions, and if council wants to address that in Call to Council, they may, okay?
Okay. Well, thank you very much, just funny to know that we do want to become, you know, more involved in a, you know, an amicable relationship with our city.
Excellent, nice to see you, sir, thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled from the consent agenda by the council. Let me read that now for you. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held October 26, 2015. Item B is the adoption of a proclamation recognizing November 11, 2015 as Veterans Day, as submitted by Councilman Pollocka. Item C is the adoption of a resolution of support for the Smart FTA Section 3510 project and application. Item D is the approval of the backfilling of the police dispatcher position by establishing an eligibility list due to the resignation of dispatcher Palmer. Item E is the approval of the purchase of a 1991 sewer vector truck from the city of Hazel Park and to charge $30,000 to the Water and Sewer Fund capital outlay account, as submitted by our DPW director. Item F was pulled from the agenda earlier. Item G is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the city council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Your Honor, I'd like to move Item E, the purchase of the 1991 sewer vector truck, to the regular agenda.
Okay. We'll make that Item D on the regular agenda, and Councilman Pollocka, you introduced the veterans' resolution, would you like to read that for our residents this evening?
I would, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I know you have, for quite some time, expressed the importance of Memorial Day, and that Memorial Day is for those we've lost during the war, and Veterans Day is for those people who have served, still living, and I was quite surprised that we have not had a proclamation for Veterans Day for many, many years. So I would like to move that the 11th of November, 1918, marked the end of the war, to end all wars, and the cessation of the most destructive, sanguinary, and far-reaching war in human annals, and the resumption of the people of the United States of peaceful relations with other nations, we hope. relations with other nations, we hope may never again be severed. And it is fitting that the recurring anniversary of this date should be commemorated with Thanksgiving and prayer and exercises designated to perpetuate peace through goodwill and mutual understanding between nations. And on June 1, 1954, Congress declared that Armistice Day should be Veterans Day to honor all those who served in all wars to preserve world peace. And October 8, 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower issued the first Veterans Day proclamation. And to protect the nation they love, our veterans stepped forward when America needed them most. In conflicts around the world, their sacrifice and resolve helped destroy the enemies of freedom and save millions from oppression. In answering history's call with honor, decency, and resolve, our veterans have shown the power of liberty and earned the respect and admiration of a grateful nation. And all of Americans, veterans, have placed our nation's security before their own lives, creating a debt that we can never fully repay. Our veterans represent the best of America, and they deserve the best America can give them.
Well said, and thank you for bringing that forward.
I'd like to move we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, Madam Quitte, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Holder.
Yes, thank you. The agenda, the consent agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to the regular agenda. Item A is a consideration of a resolution to amend rules of procedure regarding December meeting dates. And Joe, are you going to want to?
Yeah, I'll introduce this, Mayor. This is an annual event. Given the holiday schedule in December, we do recommend annually to still accommodate the need to have two council public meetings during a month, but we would recommend, in the name of efficiency, to combine the two meetings on December 14, 2015.
All right. Is there any questions on that, or a motion?
I moved to adopt the resolution to move the second regular meeting of council to December 14 at 7:00. And the first regular meeting of council shall be moved to December 14, 2015 at 6:30. I'm confused.
Just you are.
You're good.
At 6:30 PM. Okay.
Is there support?
Support.
All right.
I have one comment. I've asked April to look at this earlier in the year, because I noticed that the newsletter went out with the December 28 date for city council, and I was hoping since this is an annual event, that we actually just do it early in the year and set expectations that this is something that we're going to do, and that we can put it in our newsletter going forward.
Yep.
Understood.
Very true. By the way, for those of you following at home, city manager April Lynch was not feeling well today, so Assistant City Manager Joe, thank you for filling in. So, April this evening, good to see you. All right, any other discussion? All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Holder.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to item B now, is a consideration of the IT Managed Services Agreement. And Joe, that's also you, correct?
It is. I'll be introducing the item. Mayor and council, we are recommending, well, I'll provide the background first. In September, the city had went out to bid for Managed IC Services Agreement. Typically, IT services agreement that are managed would be looking specifically for just management of the actual city's assets. We decided to take a different approach and expand that into requesting an actual embedded help desk position to be embedded into the city hall, and that the wardee would provide said solution. We arrived at this conclusion after one year of a pilot agreement with Republic Parking System, in which they did extend IT services to the city of Ferndale in the form of a single help desk position, part-time. And we did, over the year, learn that we could generate enough demand to support a help desk position, as the city's IT infrastructure grows everly more complex to accommodate today's needs. So, we went out to bid in September, we did receive six responses. In the call to action, there is a description of the criteria that went into the RFP and went into the decision-making of why we would recommend the company. And the company that we are recommending to award the contract to would be DA Central of Oak Park, Michigan. They're located close to the Oak Park-Ferndale border. DA Central was the low bid, as well as also the most qualified bid. They have experience and significant certifications in all of the technology, most of the technology infrastructure that's currently in place in the city. More importantly, have experience and an understanding of public safety technologies, such as Clemis Systems, FRMS, and extensive experience with public utilities, managing water infrastructure, water technology, and clearly a good understanding with managing public utility technologies, a very important consideration. So, in light of all of their credentials and the low bid, we would recommend council consider extending into the agreement with DA Central. And we do have members of DA Central here as well today to answer the questions the council may have. On that note, can I answer any questions for council?
What's council's pleasure on this item this evening?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about the decision to vendor this out versus hiring a full-time equivalent to do it in-house?
Yes. After our experience over the last year, we have gained a knowledge that I don't think we can offer a competitive enough salary to attract and recruit for an in-house position. Oftentimes, with municipalities that do hire in-house positions, they end up being kind of turn-and-burn positions, where they would develop a little bit, and then they would move on to the private sector. A lot of, oftentimes, is the case that it's really just an opportunity for them to get some resume, and then to move on to the private sector. And ultimately, that is because the public sector, especially at the local government level, can't compete with private sector salaries.
Okay. My second question would be then, the contract doesn't include any kind of hardware purchasing or repair costs, that's typically for the service help desk support. Correct?
Yes, it's going to be specifically for response. If there is a significant infrastructure investment or hardware investment, we would still go out for the typical bid or quote process.
Okay, but does that include project management fees or any implementation costs for technology?
They would be responsible for that as well.
Okay. And lastly, it's more of a commoner, I guess, a question, and I don't know how I feel about it, but I just want to throw it out there, we've invested a considerable amount, rightly so, to improve the technology. And while I have nothing against this or any other IT company, I mean, I haven't worked with them in the past, they become idea generators, which is nice, of where we could go next and projects we could undertake next. On the other side of that coin, that also tends to generate a lot of cost. Is there a level of oversight now that you're, in your new role, and not just, you know, innovation, to form another committee that reviews those recommendations before they go to council? Maybe with a councilperson, you and staff members? I mean, I don't know how everybody feels about that.
It's interesting, because I was actually going to bring that up, because I have a concern, too, is you've now outsourced this service, and it's very easy for that service to continually say, "Oh, you need to have this, oh, you need to have this." And so, we're always putting new technology in front of council, saying, you know, "You need to have the latest and greatest toys," when we really don't. So, I do hear you on that, Councilman Martin. I think we do need to look into, you know, having, maybe it's just something simple like we have with our ordinance committee, it's, you know, two council members and a couple of staff members.
Or when we had the capital oversight committee, you know, to review projects, I think something like that would be that level of control and more reflective of your responsibilities.
Absolutely, and I think that the capital improvement plan process in itself, and the budget process itself, will serve as two good layers of vetting, and it's a good way to institutionalize any planned hardware purchases, the capital improvement plan being a reflection of the budget priorities of council. But in addition, I would be open to recommendation for committees.
Okay, I feel pretty strongly about it, so I don't know if anybody else has questions, but when we make the motion, I'd want to embed the creation of that committee in the motion.
So, point of clarification, are you asking for a two-person council committee to support the city manager staff?
No, I'm asking for a proposal for a technology review committee that may include up to two council members, but also staff, to review recommendations before it comes to council.
Would council consider giving me the opportunity to draft a recommendation and draft how we might manage that, including thresholds for hardware purchases?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, I don't want to look at it.
Yeah, and you could perhaps bring the recommendation back at the next meeting. And Dan, let me just ask you, or maybe this is to Joe, because I thought, I heard you say that currently, this is done in the capital plan. So, is there, I guess my question is, is this a subcommittee of that, or does this need to be a separate entity? Is it?
I don't think our capital committee reviews technology requests, do they? Like when we put the phone system in?
The phone system was a direct response to the flood, and it was an insurance-covered document or project. But as far as capital, yeah, there is a capital, internal capital review committee that does help manage the capital improvement plan, and we will be developing the next five-year to 10-year cycle, that is on the docket for this year's to-do items. I could come back with a general presentation on a capital improvement plan, and then council could consider whether there was a need for an additional.
Because I didn't have an opinion, but I don't want to create an extra
I don't either. I don't want another layer.
Extra committee where one, an existing one might
I'd also request you come back with that presentation before the end of the year, so Councilman Lennon can hear one more of your presentations.
Yeah. Joe's presentations are a doozy.
I can lump that into parking.
Bring popcorn.
Maybe if we could get some parking in there, too, that would be fantastic.
I was going to say something earlier, but.
If I may, the way that I interpret this, and I hear what you're saying, Councilman Martin, and I really think, the way I interpret what you're saying, is that we need to have a stronger understanding of how these investments fit in with strategic planning, and where we're going as a community, and what do we invest in on a year-to-year basis. I know the best investment, in my opinion, that we've made, was hiring Joe, right? Because we are investing in someone to learn these IT skills internally, so that you can actually manage the contract, which, when I came on to council, our infrastructure here was pretty sad, underfunded and disconnected. And I think this is the path that we've been taking every year, we've made better investment in our technology. So, I hear what you're saying. I don't want to create another layer, but how do we integrate this in a more strategic way, so we get to what your intent is?
Yeah, I mean, to sum it up, let's let Joe go make a recommendation. I'm fine with that, I can leave it at that. But, you know, we're a city of a certain means, and we don't always need the Cadillac. Sometimes the Impala will do. And there's that review before it comes here that I think we need to be more engaged in.
Right, I know. I just feel like we've been having a clunker.
No, I don't want the clunker either.
We're just, yeah, we're just getting up to the Chevy.
We're just getting up to the Chevy.
Or, Councilman Pollocka, you like Ford analogy.
Yeah, we like Ford, yeah. We're up to the Focus.
All right. I think my point's made. Thank you.
Other questions? Other questions or comments on this item? We don't have a motion yet, either, I might add.
I'll move that we approve an IT Managed Service Agreement between the city of Ferndale and DA Central for three-year terms for the account numbers 101.179.775.105, 592.000.775.105, and 585.179.775.105, including a request that the assistant city manager come back with a proposal for a technology review committee.
Support.
All right. Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Since the gentlemen are here, is that you, right, do you want to just introduce yourself and come on up before we take a vote and say anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
I'm Bill Hogan, I'm president of DA Central. This is Stephen Smith. Stephen's our network engineer and development supervisor, and we just thank you for the opportunity to respond both in writing to the RFP and be in front of you tonight. You know, we are a local, small business, we've got 43 employees, we've been around since 1957, so we have a lot of longevity. We have an office in Oak Park and also an office in Grand Rapids, and we're just really excited about the opportunity to be able to serve you here on a lot of levels and, you know, support your systems as you need us.
So, just on the conversation that we were having, how does a company like yours make recommendations to communities, you know, because there is a whole host, a menu of options that you could recommend. And so, how, you know, hearing this stuff that we've heard, and I'm sure this is not new conversation for you, how do you, as a company, sort of manage that and make those kinds of recommendations?
Well, we've been really fortunate to have a lot of longstanding customers. And what that means is you go through cycles. There's times when you have capital budget available, and there's times when you don't. And you don't have to build everything to the nth degree. And oftentimes, there are things that you can do that can be repurposed to the most effective method. And I think that if you were to speak with some of our other clients, you know, we do that, we really consider that stewardship very, very important, that we manage that properly, because there is always the latest, greatest technology, and we don't always need it. But sometimes, there is that technology you need, especially when you start talking about protecting network infrastructure today, and firewalls, and cybersecurity, you know, you really have to be in front of some of those things. So, that requires a little more investment. But, you know, you ask me what an example is, you know, it's not unusual for us to say, "Hey, we are going to move devices from here to there, you do not need new devices, you have them, let's repurpose them." So, that's kind of part of our DNA.
Thanks. And I don't know if you want to add anything, we are familiar with you, obviously.
Sharon, no, just excited for the opportunity. Thank you for having us to council today, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve you guys.
Thank you. Any questions of council of the gentleman? Thanks.
I have one question. Do you provide your municipal clients any annual sort of update about progress working with the city, or where we are with our infrastructure? Because I think that could be part of the conversations that we're having with our assistant city manager and city manager about where we need to go. I think that would be helpful. I don't know if that's part of the agreement, the strategic planning side of things.
Part of that is kind of in the RFP, and what we're, what our suggestion was, as we responded back, is we like to have six-month updates. So, we do kind of technology vendor updates every, you know, six months, so that you're reviewing things. And that is in the documents that we put together. So, I think it's really important you keep a rhythm with that. And part of it needs to also be lifecycle management, so you're considering if things are getting outdated.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Councilman Pollocka, did you have something, or no?
No.
No, okay. Good. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or question on this item?
No, I just want to say that as someone who, you know, I interface with IT organizations on a daily basis, working at Ford Motor Company, and we have thousands of people that work in our IT, managing thousands of systems, and hardware, and software. It's easy for us to employ those individuals at Ford Motor Company. Here, it's much difficult. People who know hardware don't necessarily know software, and vice versa. Technology continues to change. What we could support 15 years ago with an individual managing our IT, hardware and software, is much different than it is today. We are so much more reliant. And therefore, we really can't afford, like Joe said, we can't afford to hire someone. We can't provide them with the training that's constantly needed, whereas by outsourcing it, the company has, you know, it's their responsibility to make sure that their employees are properly trained on what equipment works with what, you know, what other equipment, what software, you know, works with other software. So, I support this. You know, I know we'd all like to have in-house, you know, 24/7 IT support, but it's just not feasible for an organization or a city our size.
Thank you. Yes, Fire Chief Sullivan.
I know I don't usually get involved in these things, but having known Stephen Smith through his other employment, and now that he's with Mr. Hagan, I can tell you right now, the DA Central must be one hell of a company for a man of his caliber to take employment there. And I don't speak often about people, but there's a man with a lot of integrity and a lot of honor, and he's done a lot for the fire department, as well as other parts of the city, as well as his partner, Cohay. So, just from my point of view, trust him implicitly, and I just wanted you to know that.
I appreciate that. Thank you, chief. Always good to hear.
Actually, I said something, and it kind of brought a question to my head that I'm hoping Joe can, can't. What I didn't see here was, what's the extent of service? Sometimes, I know a majority of our service is, you know, nine to five, Monday through Friday. What about the, you know, 8:00 on a Saturday night, you know, something fails within the city that requires IT support? Is that emergency services?
Yeah, there is a separate fee schedule that was, wow, that was included in the appendix of the document, but I think the most important piece there is that there is a respondent available, and they're available locally, and they are available as part of their fee schedule, as part of their bid packet, yeah. So, Saturday night at midnight, if there's an issue, they'll have someone So Saturday night at midnight, if there's an issue, they'll have someone coming, right?
Except for the Dog Park, which is a separate company.
Yes. All right. Any other discussions, questions, comments on this item? All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember is Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to item C is a consideration of City Hall and District Court roof replacement proposal. And Lloyd, you're going to introduce that item this evening.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, as part of the budget process, council approved funding for the replacement of the courthouse roof. However, when you bring a company out to review the roof, it makes sense to go ahead and plan for future budgets and evaluate all the roofs, you know, that the city owns, the city buildings. What we found is that the upper roof at City Hall is actually ponding. The insulation is wet. It needs to be replaced. It was scheduled to be done next year. But our concern at this point is, is that the type of manufacturer which originally was installed improperly, it's basically acting as a pool. And although it's not leaking now, the potential exists for a catastrophic failure, which in, basically what would happen is the membrane would give way and any water that is standing would enter the space. At City Hall, that would be, you know, quite a catastrophe. So I am recommending that we approve the bid from Garland Company. As my memo indicates, Garland Company is offering what I feel incredible value to the city in that it's a 30-year warranty on the roof, no cost to the city. They do periodic inspections, which the city currently pays thousands to have done once the work is complete. But in addition to that, it's been around since the 1800s, it's employee-owned, it's unionized, really an exceptional value. And even though the price tag is there, the product we're getting is a premium roof. And, you know, I do recommend that we approve this agreement.
Other questions?
The only question I have is, if part of the packet included the Coolic Center, which we determined didn't need it right now, but wasn't, what wasn't discussed were some of the other buildings, like the fire stations, DPW. What's the schedule on those type of buildings for new roofs?
We are going to continue moving in that direction. One of the things that impressed me with Garland when we were initially started dealing with their field personnel was that they actually went on the roof and said, gee, guess what? We don't want to, you don't, you shouldn't replace Coolic Center. You should consider City Hall first, and here's why. And had a very scientific approach as to how. Core samples, visual inspections, I mean, you know, evaluation of the building code and compared to what was built, very impressive, frankly. And so, you know, we will continue to evaluate. We have evaluated other buildings. We're going to do that with the fire stations as well. And we'll continue to make those infrastructure and capital improvements, you know, that, you know, like I said, I mean, this roof alone will be a 30-year guarantee and also the courthouse. So, you know, no expense for us. In fact, now we pay an hourly rate if the roof starts leaking for, under contract. Call them up, they come out, they make, they, they have an inspector on site, they make sure it's done to manufacturer specifications, and they stand behind their warranty.
Lloyd, some residents might wonder why, since we have a practically new courthouse, that it needs a new roof. Could you just sort of explain what's going on with that?
I, I was new to the City of Ferndale when that project first started, but I can tell you from being involved with it to some degree, is that, you know, everything has a budget. And where we're at financially today, we weren't necessarily when we back in the planning stages on the courthouse. The funds are available to do the courthouse, and I think it's time. You know, we could probably get a little bit more life out of that even yet. Between the start date of the contract to remodel the courthouse and today, some time has passed, so we have gotten that lifespan. We haven't gotten a cause for, for leaks. But a 30-year-old roof, the report itself, you know, does indicate what's wrong with that roof. And so I think.
And just to be clear, the entire building is not new? I guess that was going to be my point.
Oh, absolutely not.
Is there a portion of that building that's still?
And that roof will remain.
Right.
That new portion.
Exactly. It might look like a brand-new building, but it's not, and the old existing roof is still on the old portion.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Do we have a motion?
Oh.
No, nope.
Maybe we didn't. Okay, I do need a motion. Thank you, Marty.
I move to approve the Garland Company proposal for replacing the City Hall upper level and district court roofs at a cost of $321,736, and that the expense be charged to the general fund capital outlay.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Pollock. All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now, the final item, Councilman Martin, you removed, which was formerly consent agenda item E, which is the approval to purchase a 1991 Sewervac truck from the City of Hazel Park and to charge $30,000 to the Water and Sewer Fund capital outlay account.
I don't know if we wanted to introduce that first for the public.
Go ahead. Why don't you introduce it and then, yep.
I'd be happy to. As councilors aware, city has a very robust sewer inspection and cleaning program. You know, I'm, I'm very pleased with the progress that the, that the crew has made in the last year, a little over a year. We have inspected and over 60,000 linear feet of sewer main, made numerous repairs. And as a result of that, our call volume for sewer problems has gone from the hundreds to frankly, zero. And that has a lot to do with the proactive work that the crew is doing. This particular machine was brought to my attention by the Water and Sewer Superintendent. They became aware of it through the adjacent community. They would like, they asked me to, you know, bring it to council and present it as a backup vehicle for that main truck that we have going out. We have just the one Vector currently, and it does more than just clean and service sewer mains. The, I told the crew, well, if you can substantiate to me, I'll do that. So they came back with a number of reasons why they would like the truck. One, wholesale value on the truck is about, the trade-in was 30,000, retail is closer to 60. In addition to that, there's a number of specialized pieces of equipment that would typically run thousands of dollars that is included, that they would give us as well. It acts as a, we could have two crews on at once in the event that the needs would require it. And it would extend the life of our existing truck. And because of the, the cost, it's $30,000, which is, you know, $30,000 is $30,000. But prior to us beginning our own program, we paid $80,000 in one flood event two years ago for maybe five or six weeks worth of, of work. So if we were to get just five or six weeks out of this truck, which I expect, because our mechanic did go over and completely go through the truck and found it to be in good working order, the value should be there and we should be able to get at least that out of it.
Okay.
Okay.
A couple of questions. What's the life expectancy of the truck and the Vector?
Depending upon the hours of use and the conditions, you could, with increased maintenance, you know, as the truck becomes older, you can expect to get somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 years.
Okay, so this vehicle's 24 years old?
It's 24 years old. It perhaps, you know, and it won't be used, be used as a primary vehicle. It will not be used every day. It's just going to be used periodically when the main machine is down and to help in those situations where we have perhaps a water main break. The other thing that's, that these trucks are commonly used for is hydroexcavation. In other words, they'll vector the area around utilities rather than try to dig them and disturb them. So if you have a water main break going on and you got the truck out all set up to do with the computers and the, the remote cameras in the sewer mains, you get a water main break, you've got to break that whole crew down, you've got to go over and do that. In this case, we could leave the sewer crew out, become more productive, and assign the secondary truck out to the water main break.
So due to the age of the vehicle, though, a replacement parts or repairs on this going to be more expensive or are they even available?
They are available. You know, it does become, as the vehicles get older, it will require more and more maintenance. The alternative, if we were to even consider a second truck, would literally be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I understand that. In the past, when we've needed a second truck, we've borrowed this one from other municipalities. Is that still an option that's out there?
It's always an option.
Sure, no, go ahead. Don't worry about it. You're fine. It's probably a signal to me, so don't worry about it.
Sorry. It is always an option, but we found, particularly when, you know, if there's a large rain event, that kind of thing.
Sure.
We find that those communities are using their trucks, just like we are.
So.
And because of the expense involved, most communities don't have, unless they're very large, have multiple trucks.
So most communities don't have two?
Not of our size.
Okay. And if we were to purchase this truck during the flood or that, right after the contingency of the flood, you'd indicated it would take about two years to go through and vector the sewer systems and what we have. Is that, having the second truck going to cut that time down?
Oh, certainly. For one thing, you know, even having the vehicle, our main vehicle out on the road even three, four, five days, that's an additional week, a month that we could get, you know, have, keep our main truck out. And so, yeah, it, it would definitely help.
Okay. All right, I have enough. Thank you.
Lloyd, I appreciate how aggressive we've been at sewer, sewer line maintenance and especially since last year after the flood and the sewer backups that we had last summer. And I know that you have been very aggressive about it, and I think that this is a piece of that strategy. What have, what have been the results? What, how many backups have you seen since then?
Well, since we began the multi-pronged approach. Initially, we were in, you know, crisis mode.
Yeah.
We wanted to get out there and get as many complaints resolved as possible. And so initially, we were hitting all the troubled areas. We charted them, we, you know, made a plan so that we could begin worst first and work our system out. By doing that, in the last year, a little more than a year, we've managed, we've completely gone through those most problematic areas and found to a great extent that there's problems with the sewer main. I think, although I don't have the numbers and I can certainly look at it, I think one thing that's helped too, is that we can provide information to the homeowner, particularly those that have signed up for the sewer, lateral sewer line insurance. And when you show, you know, your contractor or your insurance company the view that we can sometimes obtain from the main, it's a no-brainer that it might need some additional work. And so I think there's a combination of things happening that the city has done in the last year that's really, literally, I mean, we have had in the last, well, since last spring, we've had, I think, one call and it wasn't related to the city's sewer main. It had to do with the private line. And so I can't always promise you that would be the case.
Right.
But the crews are out regularly. We try to keep them out year-round. Sometimes temperatures don't allow that, but because, you know, there is a lot of wa, water used in the process with the vehicles. But they've had tremendous success. And, you know, I certainly want to do everything I can to support the crew and, and have that continued.
But literally, if I hear you correctly, since the spring, we've had no incidents of, of.
Nothing to do with the city.
A resident calling us for a sewer backup related to the city sewer.
Correct.
That's, that's, considering where we were a year ago, that's pretty amazing. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
You don't have a motion.
Oh, I don't have a motion. I did it again.
I approve the purchase of a 1991 sewer truck, sewer Vector truck from the City of Hazel Park and charge the expense to the appropriate water sewer fund.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Lennon. Any last, final discussion or question?
Yeah, I just want to echo what, what the mayor is, that I think you and your team have done a spectacular job. I also am really pleased to see that your staff is showing some kind of entrepreneurial tendencies to go out and find the solution. That being said, I don't want to mislead you. $30,000 is $30,000 and that's my personal feeling, is we can apply it to better places. So, but I don't want to take away from the effort or discourage your folks from taking this train of thought and bringing ideas to us. I love the fact they did it.
Thank you.
All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call to council, and I see the police chief is with us here. Anything for the good of the community, chief?
Very briefly, Your Honor, I just want to give the council an update on the promotional examinations that are going on in the police department. We have completed the first part of the captain's exam. We have a list that's not yet been certified. We'll be sitting down with the city manager, myself, talking to the candidates, and we hope to have a, a person in place by the first of the year. Additionally to that, that would create an opening for lieutenants and lieutenant, lieutenantcy will open up as well as a sergeancy after the lieutenantcy. That test will be on December 1st, and shortly thereafter, the oral boards will occur. So we'll have a whole slew of command staff shift coming up right around the first of the year. And lastly, as a little bit more, less involved, is as you may notice, that there's a little bit of facial hair going on here.
Saw that.
A little bit uncomfortable with it.
A little Movember.
Myself. But Sergeant Brown, one of the day shift platoon sergeants, came up with a No Shave November. Talked me into it. I paid my 25 bucks while I'm growing my beard. But we have, we have about a 60% participation level from the police department. One of our officers, Jason Collette, is a cancer survivor. He's one of our participants. So far, we have collected $625 that we will be donated to a 501(c)(3) organization called No Shave November that funds the American Cancer Society, Prevent Cancer Foundation, Fight Colorectal Cancer, and the St. Jude's Children Hospital. Each organization will receive 25% of the money raised by the No Shave November campaign. We are proud to have such a robust response from our officers and support for the No Shave November, particularly when one of our owners personally experienced and survived the life-challenging effects of cancer. You can still get involved if you're interested, No Shave November, by visiting HTTPS www.no-shave.org. And you can contribute and participate if you would like.
Excellent. Well done. Can't wait to see you in another couple of weeks.
I think I'll contribute, but I won't participate.
You know what? She said she wasn't going to participate.
But I would contribute.
That she would contribute.
Excellent.
Derek, anything else from community development this evening?
Yes, we do have a couple of things, Your Honor. We've been asked a couple of times to give updates on a couple of the projects that have been approved or, and/or are under construction currently, just timeframes and such. So we, we, there's a few of them that we get more questions about than most. thought we, there's a few of them that we get more questions about than most. One is the former Save-A-Lot site located on Nine Mile, north side of Nine Mile. The developer did have a site plan approved for a residential apartment building on the site. Planning commission did approve it. The final site plans have been approved. The applicant then was, has submitted or will be submitting soon, technical drawings for building permits for construction. We expect those to be reviewed throughout the course of the fall and early winter and probably see some demolition, maybe mid-winter or late winter, and then construction starting on the project if it goes forward, if they continue to move forward in the springtime. So, same with the American Legion Hall. We have started the execution of a purchase agreement with them as approved by council. They have been conducting their due diligence on the site, including initial environmental, which is required when you change ownership. They have met with staff on a couple of occasions on draft site plans, which will have to go to the planning commission for approval for construction on the site, and then follow the same process through to the spring, where if everything goes well, we anticipate construction to start in the spring. We did get a occupancy request and review for the former Subaru dealership on the northeast corner of Camborn and Woodward Heights. Art Van Piersleep has indicated that they're interested in moving into the location and have started interior demo on the site, so I think we'll see some action in there soon. Of course, all of these, you know, are tentative and not automatics that they'll be followed through, but it is public and they have come for some of their approvals, so that is, we wanted to let everybody know that's what it appears is going in there at the time. We don't know any tenants for the new building on the other side of the street. As far as we're aware, they don't currently have any leases, but when they do, or if we find out about them, we'll certainly make you aware of them. And the last thing I would like to do, and it was touched on earlier, is I would like to introduce Justin. Justin's been a technically a part-time planner with our department for several months now. Although he's part-time, he's been putting in considerable amount of time with us and managing projects on his own. Recently, he was, with council's approval, he was hired as a full-time staff member and city planner, so he'll be taking on a lot of the responsibilities of managing the planning commission and individual development projects. So, we'd like to welcome him aboard. It's long overdue. Now, we're going to make him say a few things about himself, so.
Wow, all right.
Thanks. Yeah, it's great to be officially on board. I've been a Ferndale resident for about a year and a half, served on the Parks and Recreation Commission for a bit, and then started working here, part-time, in December. And so, started slowly, a few days a week, and then gained more responsibility, and it's great to have the opportunity and love working for Ferndale, so.
Excellent. Great to have you, Justin. It's a busy area and we needed the help and you were just the right guy. Appreciate it.
Eric, if you're doing No Shave November, you're really putting the chief to shame.
I am going to contribute, but I think I got a little bit of a head start on it, so.
Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Just a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to share with all of you, as well as our folks, our retirees at home, that due to the success of our health and wellness center, we have actually opened up our clinic to be our occupational health clinic as well, not for workers' comp, but to do all of our pre-employment physicals and screenings and annual physicals as they are required in various positions within our organizations. Additionally, we're excited to announce, and we're working on some more formal communications, but for those retirees who are pre-Medicare eligible, we are looking to open our center on January 1st to be able to accommodate our retirees.
Nice.
So, we're very excited about that. We're working on kind of all the specifics, more information to come, but for those of you watching or listening, we're really excited for that to unfold and see how that takes us. Additionally, I don't know if I'm stealing this from anyone, but tomorrow night is our annual Elks Law and Order--
Ah, that's all I have for night.
Nope, I'll give it to you. All right, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, seriously.
I only brought it up because we have been managing internally that process, but we're honoring some really great staff, as all of our staff obviously do a really great job every year of putting forth great effort. We have our City Hall Employee of the Year, Cecile Thompson, being recognized, our DPW Employee of the Year, William Forbes. The Police Officer of the Year is Daniel Cusdale. Our Firefighter of the Year is Jack Pichet. The Court Employee of the Year is Sonia DeBrinket, and--
Citizen of the Year.
Citizen of the Year is--
Kat Bruner James.
Bruner James, yeah, I wasn't sure how her name-- So, we are very, very proud of our staff and all the hard work and all of the recommendations and nominations that the rest of our team have brought forward to share in their successes, so.
Excellent. Thanks, Jenny. Fire chief, anything else from the good of the fire department this evening?
Mr. Mayor, congratulations to DA Central. We just competed in the--
You getting a kickback?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Anyway, we'll never have any idea what I get out of it. The fire department competed in a chili cook-off tin alarm in Detroit for the Detroit Fire Department and Police Department Benevolent Fund Association, which helps those officers and firefighters that were crippled in the line of duty or killed and they help their families. This is the second year in a row we have participated, and this year, we brought home the trophy for the People's Choice Chili Award. So, all the people there in thousands voted and we had the number one chili. Didn't win the overall event, but we're happy with what we won.
Whose recipe was it?
We created the recipe last year for the event.
Wow.
So, it's part of Mike Shemansky's recipe, and he helped cook, Jack Pichet helped cook. We took another award-winning recipe and then actually diners' drive-ins and dives, we stole some things off of there.
Imitation is the sincerest form of playing.
There you go, so we created it, and this year, we took home the trophy.
Excellent, congratulations. All right. Kira, anything else from the community engagement perspective this evening?
Yes, really quickly, I might be stepping on Lloyd's toes a little bit with this one, but I would need to do my every-other-week check-in about leaf pickup communications. So, we have our Facebook event page that we have set up with information that we're sharing with residents. It's getting great engagement. We've got about 1,000 people a week who are viewing the information and about 25 posts a week or so. People are using it as an opportunity to let us know where leaf pickup needs to happen, which we're then funneling through to Lloyd and DPW. They're doing an awesome job of being able to kind of run with that. As far as I know, we have not had any complaints this year. I mean, we've got requests for service, but no complaints, so that is wonderful. And I just wanted to remind residents that the information is out there. You can find it at, it's a bit.ly, bit.ly/ferndale-leaf. And you don't even need to be a member of Facebook to go, you can view the information without Facebook membership, but we encourage everybody to go out there for updates. We're doing weekly updates about where leaf pickup will be happening as far as we know, sharing information about how to rake leaves out there, to have the best and fastest service available, and all kinds of good stuff. And then, one more little thing, I just wanted to thank all of our residents, so many people who showed us their sticker last week during the election. We had, I think, about 60 people use the hashtag #showusyoursticker with their "I voted" selfie, and far more than we could share across our own social media pages. So, I wanted to thank everybody who participated, and it's really exciting to see our residents kind of come together and get involved during one of our local elections, so. That's it.
Excellent. Thanks, Kira. Lloyd, anything else from DPW this evening? Yeah. Yeah, and you know, one of the questions I do get, and so I'll let you start with this if you don't mind, is, well, why isn't there just a set schedule for what, so that like garbage pickup, I know what day the leaves are going to be coming, and I know it's not that simple. So, do you want to just sort of explain to residents--
Certainly.
--why that's the case?
This year in particular, I mean, every season actually is a little bit different. This year in particular, we've had some record-breaking temperatures or near-record-breaking temperatures. The leaves have stayed on the trees a lot longer than they would in a typical fall, and so, those leaves tend to drop all at the same time. We can't be everywhere at the same time, but we do survey the city and we do try to balance out where we're at, you know, making sure that everybody is getting equal service, both east, west, north, south. And so, you know, if there's a large amount of leaves on your street, chances are, we're aware of it and we're scheduling crews to get there. We are now in our peak season. Over the weekend, you know, the leaves finally started dropping heavily, people have been raking. So, I can ask residents, you know, please, continue to pull those leaves out, get them at the curb, and we will be there. And sometimes, especially at peak season, it can look a little bit like making an omelet, you know, because you have a bunch of equipment, a bunch of people, and we've adopted some strategies in the last couple of years that are a little bit unorthodox, but we find they're very productive. And so, if I could plead for a little bit of help from the residents, we can be quite overwhelming when we come to your neighborhood with maybe a dozen pieces of equipment and, you know, 10, 12, 15 guys. But rather than be attracted to the scene, if you give us a little bit of room, you know, we're happy that people are interested in sometimes, you know, it's, you know, children like in particular come out and watch the heavy equipment. But be mindful of the area that you're in, please give the crews room to work so that you're safe and they are as well. And as I said, there are some unorthodox things we're doing, like using box scrapers. If we find a long stretch of the, of a block that it's heavy, has heavy leaves piled on it, and it's open for us to come in and basically take a box plow, which is just like it sounds, you know, it's a big square piece of equipment on the front of a, could be a loader, backhoe. We push those all to the street. It's a little messy at first, but we do come back with other pieces of equipment. And what we have found is that it's probably, well, I was looking at the streets that we cleared today, it is actually probably four to five times more productive. And, you know, we don't do a final cleaning until we start nearing the end of the season, and that's when the sweepers go out and they, you know, hit the curbs and that sort of thing. Right now, it's about volume, you know, and anything that residents can do, particularly pulling their cars off the street, we handle it this way. We have four vehicles that we can deploy. Those vector trucks, vacuum trucks, they're not vectors, are out and assigned in a specific area. You will see signs telling you that the vehicle will be there the next day, barring that we don't have some unforeseen circumstance, weather can contribute to delays. But in addition to that, we have roving crews that will take other pieces of equipment and areas, as I said, that maybe are clear for vehicles, and they will plow the entire street down to the end and load them. And sometimes, you know, a citizen might arrive on the scene and see five or six trucks backed up waiting for a loader. The loader that we have, we can load a truck in two or three minutes. And so, don't look at it, I mean, sometimes people think, well, that's a lot of manpower sitting out there. Well, it's so much more productive, and it's not, especially in peak season, you know, you have these machines going out and vacuuming the curbs, but this is additional equipment that we're able to deploy at the peak time in order to get increased efficiency and get that bulk volume off the street. Within a couple of weeks, statistics have shown that, you know, we're usually wrapping up the season, and so, if they can be patient, work with us, remove those vehicles--
You'll be plowing before you know it.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Right, yes, all right.
All right.
Thanks, Floyd, appreciate it, yes. Marnie, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Yes, thank you. We had an election last week, of course, and I just wanted to announce our turnout. We had 2,249 voters, which equaled 14.5%, but down from the 2,013 election, but we had the marijuana decriminalization, so that wasn't terribly unexpected. Our AV numbers were up, some more people are voting by absentee ballot, which is very cool. Another thing that we started was voter survey, and out of those 2,250 voters, 625 have filled out the survey--
Wow.
--which has given us just so much information. I spent three hours putting it in last night, but we've also asked if anyone would like to volunteer, so that's become a very good recruiting process for us. We've had at least 50 to 75 people who indicated that they'd be willing to receive applications and lots of good suggestions. Barb and Kara and I are going to be working together on kind of educating voters on what we can do, what we can't do, why we're moving to more precincts, where we plan on going. So, we're really excited about the information that we've received from our voters, and we're going to try to implement those ideas as we move forward.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Well-run election, by the way. I didn't hear of a single wrinkle at all. Great job. Joe, anything from the city manager's office this evening?
Yes, a few quick announcements. One, I want to remind residents that city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day on Wednesday, just a reminder there. Two, I want to thank everyone for their patience during the installation of the new city phone system last Friday. We are about one week in and we are still smoothing out some of the existing wrinkles of such a significant transition from an older system to a modern system. We are sorting things out, but I do recognize that there could be some frustrations trying to reach people at older numbers. We are working as hard as we can to get everything back up online as it was before and better. And finally, I would like to put out a reminder that winter tax statements will be mailed out on December 1st, so you could expect the first week of December to see your winter tax bills arriving in the mail.
Very good. All right, Dan Christ, anything from the legal--
Just one item, Mayor. I just wanted to bring to your attention, the ordinance committee met earlier today to go over the initial draft of a proposed ordinance which would implement the residential parking program that council heard at its last council meeting, and the goal would be for council to have a approved form ordinance prior to the end of the year.
Excellent, thank you for the update, good. Councilman Martin?
Three things. One, we did have an election Tuesday, and I just want to thank the residents of Ferndale for re-electing me. It's a very humbling experience, and I just feel so honored and proud to be able to serve this community, and my congratulations to Councilwoman-elect Raylan Leaks May, and of course, the mayor, who had an incredibly tough race.
It was an elevator. That was an elevator.
But last, I also want to thank Bill White, who also ran for city council. I really enjoyed getting to know him over the course of the election, and it's not an easy thing to run, so I really do respect his decision to participate and I'm appreciative of the conversations that we had over the course of the election. Secondly, the Chamber of Commerce's annual gala is this--
I really don't have any--
Shouldn't have switched--
That's right, baby.
You shouldn't--
Welcome to my world, I'm last.
You shouldn't have switched chairs. The Chamber of Commerce Gala is this Thursday, and it's at Twist, Twisted Tavern in nightclub. So, tickets are available online, and I know they're still available. It's always a good time, and they always have a really great silent auction, so if you're available to attend that, you're more than welcome. And just an update from the Housing Commission, we've launched our executive director search. As you recall, the priorities, as it were, were to respond to the HUD report and try to shore up and address the operational issues at the Housing Commission. We then immediately moved into an executive director search, which I'm a member of that committee, which I legally can be, we checked. And we actually held resident forums, which were well-attended, to ask them what they wanted to see and what they did not want to see in their next executive director. And the interviews will be public, so there is a high level of resident engagement that we've included in this process, and we're finalizing the job description and the posting will go out within the next couple of weeks. I want to thank Jenny for participating with that, as well as city manager April Lynch, and our goal is to have the position filled by February. I know that may seem like a long time, but when you factor in the holidays and interview schedule, sifting through candidates, that's kind of what we're looking at. So, I'll keep you updated as we progress there.
Excellent. Did we leave anything for you?
I got one little thing.
All right.
As we all know, leaves, rain, and sewer grates don't mix, and DPW can't be everywhere. And I think it was about a week and a half ago, two weeks, we had a lot of rain, couple days of rain, and posted on social media was, "Call the DPW." They were taking pictures of the puddling up in front of their house. Folks, help the DPW, they're busy enough. Grab a broom, grab a rake, clean your grate off. If you're not able-bodied, call Dan, he'll come and get it. But, you know, I have one right in front of my house, and I'm out there constantly, constantly cleaning it. I know puddles can be hazardous, so there's no sense posting on the social media that the DPW will come out. Yeah, they'll come out after they get done doing the 20 blocks on the west side, you know, whatever, so just help us out a little bit, that's all, it's the community involvement.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Councilman Spolika?
A couple of things. I just want to thank and congratulate the city clerk's office, Marnie and Barb, for another successful and error-free election. Congratulations to all those that won in the elections, including our neighboring cities. There were some hotly contested elections in a couple of our neighbors, and those actually went very, very well. I want to try not to steal her thunder, but I do want to congratulate Councilwoman Piana on her successful small business forum, BizInnovation--
Innovate.
BizInnovate, thank you. Was very, very informative, and I'll let you, if you want to speak on that further. And that's all I have.
All right. Speaking of which, Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, well, I wanted to pile on the congratulations to Dan and yourself for getting re-elected. I'm so excited to serve with you going forward, and also to Raylan Leaks May, welcome, and we're going to miss you, Mike, but you're not done yet.
No, we've got one more Joe presentation to go.
Yeah.
But I wanted to echo what Councilman Martin said, and I wanted to extend a thank you to Bill White for running a considerate campaign, which I thought reflected his approachable style and his affable nature. And if you looked at some of the campaigns in cities around us, it got quite nasty, and I think--
Delicious.
--campaigns can really go down nasty paths, and I just wanted to appreciate everybody who ran. Any person that runs for office has a passion and love for their community, and they just want to serve, and I will never, ever deny that for any candidate. And so, I just wanted to thank Mr. White for getting involved. Also, you mentioned the BizInnovate session. More thank yous to Chris Best at the Rust Belt for hosting our event, but also to Derek and Justin and Cindy at the DDA for really helping pull off a well-executed event. Couldn't have done it without their help. In addition to the Ferndale Small Business Collaborative Collaboration members, and that's the, again, the DDA, the Chamber, School District, Library, and Oakland County, Michigan Works. Really, the intent of the session was to bring businesses together, to learn about new ways to get capital to fund their businesses. One thing we're learning is that some of our retailers and small businesses, they spend their life savings to launch their business. their life savings to launch their business, and then they have a hard time getting access to capital, whether they're a startup or been in business for a couple of years or ready position to grow again. And I think they came out to learn about six new resources to help them that are out there to provide organizational support and also be connectors to the different type of lender, in particular, local vesting, which is a new term about how you use your customers to raise capital. And so this is a whole new sort of approach for downtowns and small communities, and I think it's very applicable to Ferndale, and we're going to see who is going to innovate using these tools in Ferndale. I think some businesses showed up who really were drawn to this type of local vesting, so I'm excited to take this into the new year and see where it goes with all these great people involved. I also want to announce that we received word from the RTA, the Regional Transportation Authority, via Parsons Brinckhoff, that the next phase of the Bus Rapid Transit is commencing soon, and there is a Woodward Bus Rapid Transit Advisory Committee meeting happening in the next two weeks, and it really is going to kick off the environmental review process, which we will learn more about, the requirements of the environmental review process as dictated by the Federal Transportation Administration. So we're moving forward. They want this done before November 2016, which is going to be on the ballot initiative for regional transit. But for me, the real important part of Bus Rapid Transit is about mobility in Ferndale. This is all about connecting our different modes, not only our streets, our bicycle lanes, but also our sidewalks. This is all about getting people to places from point A to point B in multiple ways, not just bike lanes, not just cars, not just our streets, but also buses and bus rapid transit. I think we have a lot of education to do, because I get a lot of questions from our residents, whether or not the M1 Streetcar is coming to Eight Mile, or whether or not light rail is coming to Eight Mile. So those conversations that happened three or four years ago are still in the mindsets of our residents, and so I think this is part of the process over the next year of educating how to create a regional transit system, starting with the Woodward Spine, and really improving mobility for Ferndale residents and everybody in the region. So stay tuned.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I will reiterate what has been said about the election. Marnie, I think you and Barb and your group did a wonderful job. I'm blown away that we had so much resident participation in this survey. I don't know of another community that does that. Maybe there are, but I think it speaks volumes of Ferndale that we do care about your input, and we've got a lot of it, and we'll use that, I know, especially as we're coming into a crucial election year, a presidential year, which is always much higher turnout, so I know you'll use that information to good use. So congratulations, and also congratulations to Dan, pleasure to serve with you again for another couple of years, and Raylan, who is here, can't wait to see you up here at the table as well. We'll save it for you. And it was a particularly, I think, civil debate, which was really pleasant, and it's as if we all took the civility pledge. Speaking of which, Kat Bruner James is the president of CFF, who initiated the civility pledge, and we're going to honor her tomorrow night as Citizen of the Year, along with the Employees of the Year, and I couldn't think of a more qualified or deserving recipient of that award. So if you're around the Elks Club or on 6 o'clock, and you want to pop in and wish all of the employees and Kat congratulations, please feel free to do that. Sharon, you mentioned Carol Jackson, and I'm going to reiterate that as well. Carol has once again stepped in in the role of interim Executive Director of the Chamber right before the big gala event of the year. So the best way, I think, that we can all support Carol in our chamber is to show up on Thursday night at Twist. Only 50 bucks a ticket to support our great, award-winning Chamber of Commerce and Carol Jackson, who's pulling that together, so if you're available Thursday night, it's always a great time. There's going to be really good music this year, live music, food, and all of that good stuff, so if you're around on Thursday, stop in Twist for the Chamber's dinner. And with that, meeting adjourned.